Everybody ready? Everybody logged in? You good? Okay, call the public hearing order. Can we all rise and pledge allegiance to our government? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everybody for coming. Sorry we got a late start. Ran over a little bit late in our team meeting. What we have tonight, for everybody at home, we are not live. You probably know that because you're watching this on a tape. Anybody gets an email or a Facebook message asking about it, just tell them that we were supposed to go live but they were not able to do it for us tonight. Some people want the weather or the ice or something's not working, they're gonna try to get it on a delay later tomorrow. Hopefully that'll work. So we'll start with an overview of the 2018-19 budget.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Middleton McGoodwin. I'm the superintendent of schools. Tonight's public hearing, there'll be a brief presentation by myself with the PowerPoint, and I'm gonna turn the mic over to Mike O'Neil, Director of Business and Finance. You also will have the opportunity to address the board. That's really what a public hearing is about. The microphone will be here and you'll be asked to come to the podium so everyone can hear. A public meeting, which is a school board meeting, is very different than a public hearing. The school board, public meeting, is a meeting of the board in public. And the board can limit at times, and in some cases because of certain issues, they discourage participation of the public. I think the strength of this school board is that they have never done that, but they do have to restrict comments at times so their business can be accomplished. But, in a public hearing, the board does seek public testimony. And the public testimony this evening is gonna be about the budget. So my goal tonight is to provide a brief overview of the budget process, talk a little bit about some of the challenges that face the New Hampshire Public School Districts. I'm gonna go pretty quickly through this, but I'm trying to sensitize everyone about the challenges because there can be perceptions that, why are our taxes going up? Why does education cost so much? When you hopefully review some of the facts I'm gonna present tonight, there's much more to it. Then the fiscal year 19 budget as of tonight, and then a review of the warrant articles and the impact on the tax rate itself. The budget process traditionally involves a board taking a step back, evaluating all the programs and practices, finding efficiencies, and then making some strategic adjustments. The board has a right to do it differently. And this year, the school board chose to do it this way. They met on September 30th, that is their right, the public meeting, and they elected to arrive at a figure, $1.2 million below the current fiscal year. And then that were our marching orders or directives. There was quite a bit of give and take, 'cause I was concerned about that. I was hired, David Putnam and others in this audience were part of that process, I was hired and I was asked several questions during the interview process. And I think some of the things my interview was heard was that I wasn't going to be someone who would just sort of be a bobblehead, that if I felt something had to be said, I would say it. That's not disrespectful, that's not being insubordinate, it's being basically what I consider to be a leader, saying and doing what you think you need to do, even if others won't. And so, I expressed myself, and then realizing the board was firm, we proceeded. So, I share that with you because I have no disrespect to the board, they have a legal responsibility, budget and policy. But I believe I have a professional responsibility to say, "Could you reconsider?" So here we are tonight, and when you think about the budget, and most of us in this auditorium have been in school for several years, some of us private schools, some of us public, but the public schools today are needing to prepare children very differently than 30 or 40 years ago. In fact, many of the jobs that exist today are no longer where in existence years ago, but in fact are not available today. Automation and other low-skill jobs have basically been eliminated. And so, yesterday, a basic education was sufficient. Today, it's not. It's not. And if you look at this diagram and chart, look at the unemployment rate. The unemployment rate for those who have advanced degrees down to less than a high school education. And look at the median usual weekly earnings. You can see that a lack of skills handicaps a student and handicaps them as an adult. So the days of minimal education are now fading quickly, and in fact, a high school education generally is no longer sufficient to acquire a reasonable job, that additional skills and additional training is necessary, especially the ability to learn, unlearn, and relearn. So that's why today's public education is very different. Forty years ago, a young man and woman could graduate from high school, find a job, raise a family, buy a home, but many of those positions, as I said before, have been eliminated, replaced by other positions that require more skills and technology. So our responsibility is to educate this year over 1,800 Claremont School District children. And over the past 11 years, you can see there has been a decrease, but not to the point where you can see the budget being drastically reduced. Now, what I'd like to do is to share with you, just for a few minutes, some of the challenges. The challenges that impact public education, and the challenges that also impact the homeowner, the people who pay real estate taxes. The state, in the past 30 years, has been shifting down many of the responsibilities the state once held, and were responsible for. Here are some examples. In the past 18 years, property taxes have more than doubled in New Hampshire, on the average. That is not because the legislature wished to increase the burden on the taxpayer, it's because certain expenses that the state used to be responsible for are now being passed down to the municipalities. When the school building aid was eliminated eight years ago, $43 million was shifted to the property owners in our state. When the state's contributions, the cost of teacher retirement was eliminated, $80 million was shifted to the property taxpayers. If anyone would like to see this report that I gathered this from, please email me, I'd be very glad to send it to you. Adequacy aid. Adequacy aid was created to somewhat level the playing field in our state. Certain communities have sufficient revenue that they can provide different opportunities that other communities that don't have that revenue can. So as a result, adequacy aid was created to somewhat level the playing field, that a child's zip code shouldn't determine their academic opportunities. Adequacy aid is being slowly pared down. And if you look at the examples, every year there's gonna be a further reduction across our state, impacting municipalities as the state pulls back and eventually eliminating all adequacy aid. Those communities that have a reasonable revenue source, some of our neighbors, they can absorb that. Communities that do not have great challenges with that. Here's an example, a 1617 school year, the revenue changes. Notice, when I talk about adequacy aid, in fiscal year 16 and fiscal year 17, the drop was over $400,000. The impact on the tax rate was over half a dollar. So, the homeowner is impacted, not by the school district, but by the state who is passing down their former responsibility to the municipalities. Whether you're on city council, whether you're on school board, municipalities are feeling this impact. Now, there's one more trend that we hope is not going to be approved, and that's Senate Bill 193, where school money, money designed and intended for public schools, will be dispersed through children attending charter schools or homeschool students, or private school students. So a child who lives in Claremont, whose parents choose to send him or her to a private school, they would, if this bill is passed, they would have access to that money. That money that was destined for the Claremont School District now would go to that family, regardless of their income. We have over 100 children who were homeschooled in the Claremont community. If this bill is passed, each one of those children, and I believe the amount's about $9,000 when you consider all of the variables, it's not just the funding of something like $3,600 for adequate education, but the funding for free reduced lunch and other funds that normally would go to the school district are now being, would be dispersed. So that's a, this is a very serious drawdown. It has not been approved yet, we've been talking about it, the hope is, but you should know that the President of the United States, the Federal Secretary of Education, the Governor of New Hampshire, and the Commissioner of Education in New Hampshire are in favor of school choice. This is school choice. I have no opposition to school choice. I think parents deserve the right to choose the education opportunities for their children, but not at the expense of public education. So, despite the shifting down of the state's former financial obligations to municipalities like Claremont and others, we haven't been laying down. And I want you to look at the budget trend. With fixed cost increases, with reductions of state aid, with collective bargaining obligation to our dedicated employees, with health insurance increases, our budget has not been increasing in proportion to that. Here's the bubble, 5.8 percent. That was a Stevens High School renovation bond. But if you look carefully in the next few years, and there's another bubble, 1.87 percent, but 600,000 of that, this increase was due to grants, which had no impact. So it's a fairly flat line. So despite the fiscal challenges and despite the state downshifting its obligations to the municipalities, the Claremont School District has been holding its own, not on the back of the taxpayer. In fact, this chart illustrates, in the past four years, look at the increase. That increase with reduction of state aid, that increase with fixed cost increases, we still are able to hold our own. We have been, every year, restructuring, we have been, every year, compacting, if you The budget has not been going on a plane upward, it has been basically flat. That doesn't mean anything other than strategic restructuring, really how a budget should be built and designed. I'm very proud of this, proud of the school board members, and proud of the staff and community supporting us, that we've been able to do this. But even with that flat line the past four years, real estate taxes are going up. How can that be? Think back at what I just said to you a few minutes ago. So despite these increases, the renovation bond, reductions, and uncontrollable fixed cost increases, in the past four years, our average annual percent change in the budget has been less than 0 percent. So that's why I really had trouble, with all due respect to the school board, and I do respect them, but I had trouble when the directive was $1.2 million below the current fiscal year, because I believe we've been very conservative. Now again, I'm not saying this in front of my fellow board members, to be disrespectful, but I'm just explaining to you why I think there has been some stones in the shoes over this. But now we're going forward. So despite all these challenges, despite the difficulties, I'm very proud of what I'm going to show you. We are, on an annual basis, now measuring student growth in reading and in mathematics. Three times a year, we're measuring, and three times a year, we're going to be publicly discussing this. And this information is gonna help drive instruction. And the same holds true in writing, that we will be having these measures, we will be publicly discussing our students' accomplishments, and we'll be publicly discussing what we are doing when they're not being successful. So one may think, "What does this have to do with the budget?" Ladies and gentlemen, this is the budget. It's student achievement, or the lack of achievement and what we do when that occurs. It's Stevens High School. If you remember, a few moments ago, I showed some slide, a slide that talked about the unemployment rate and the lack of income for students who do not have adequate skills, let alone a student who has left school before graduation. This is why we have a five-year goal of exposing students to opportunities. We're not pushing them into college, but we're at least providing them options and an awareness of their opportunities to acquire post-high school experiences. And that's already working. We see an increase of the students who are applying and are being accepted. So again, when you look at this chart, it would be wrong to just say, "Do the best you can, if you finish high school, that's great, and if you're not being successful, well, there are job opportunities out there," because that's no longer the case. And we have an obligation, and actually a commitment, to provide every student with the opportunities of being able to acquire added skills beyond high school. And one final goal is attendance. One of our goals is that, in the next four years, the high school attendance will be, on average, 93 percent. This past year was a little over 91 percent. Attendance. Why is attendance important? Is that really a goal? Let's look at attendance. And let's look at the importance of a student coming to school and being on school on time. And let's also look at some hard data. There's been some discussion about, "Well, you know, it was working in the past. Why do we need this? Why do we need this change in administration? Why do we need this policy change? It's worked in the past, why are we doing this?" I'd like you to look at this. Stevens High School, 2011-12. I am not pointing my finger at the school board, I am not pointing my finger at the former administration or my predecessor Jackie Galette, showing this. This is hard data, and we needed to make some changes. If you use data, the shame and blame is counterproductive. If you're honest with data and saying, "This is not acceptable." This is why we can't go back. As freshmen, 130 students had 10 or more tardiness. As freshmen, 46 had 50 or more days tardy. So I use this to say to you, this is why we now call homes every day of students. We don't do a robo-call, an automated call, we make personal calls, we make personal home visits. We wanna support families, we're having children, having trouble with their children coming to school, we want the children in school. We can't go back. We can't save money by reducing administration unless things slip. So tonight, you're going to be discussing the budget. And there's been a lot of publication, a lot of discussion about the budget. The school board wanted the budget $1.2 million below this current fiscal year. In early December, I'm sorry, mid-November, we presented the budget, which were our needs, and then we presented another budget afterwards, that was a $1.2 million reduction. We also presented, in December, early December, an alternative of $328,000 reductions. These were not our recommendations. We were trying to offset the $1.2 million reduction, would you consider this reduction, of $329,000? And the board on December 20th elected to accept a budget of $329,000 reduction, a reduction of $329,000. And so as of tonight, after the board voted December 20th, 2017, for a reduction of $329,000, tonight, our budget is $31,148,257. It's important to note however, that there are additional items that will impact the fiscal year 19 appropriation. The school board on December 20th approved and ratified the SREA collective bargaining agreement, that's $307,000. In adequacy aid, it is projected, with the state continually downshifting its obligations, that the community of Claremont will have to absorb about $214,000 reduction in revenue, adequacy aid. So I share all this with you to try to emphasize this point. These are difficult times for public education, but I believe the school district has made an honest and vetted effort to restrict the cost and impacting on the taxpayer. But understand that the school budget is not the only factor that is impacting the budget, and more importantly, impacting the tax rate. So tonight, we're gonna be discussing some warrant articles. And tonight, we're going to be sharing with you, as of this evening, the warrant articles for March of 2018. The main budget, as it stands now, would be a reduction of 0.03 per thousand on the tax rate. If the default budget was approved, it would be an increase of 0.24. Why is the default budget smaller? Excuse me, why is it larger? Default budgets are supposed to be smaller. The default budget is larger because of the strategic compressing that we have been going through with the Claremont School District budgets. I was once criticized, "You know, you haven't given us a choice. You've taken away a default budget that's lower. We don't inflate that default budget. Our budget has been constricted over the past several years, and that's why it's lower." The default budget was to protect the residents from a runaway school budget. In our case, we're doing that for you. Roofing improvements, school bus lease, and security upgrades. So if this remains the budget, the increase would be 0.03 per thousand. Just know, there are other variables that can come into play that will increase the tax rate as a result of the lack of support or declining support and assistance from the state. Mike, would you like to pick up from here and add any points?
Hello, good evening everybody. I'm Mike O'Neil, Director of Business and Finance. I may have to sit down to do this, but I'll give this my best shot, okay? We handed out some paperwork that basically looks like this, it's got the, it's headed up by saying Claremont School District proposed warrant article totals fiscal year 18 to fiscal year 19. And you'll see, if you look at A1, 2, and 3. Did everybody get a copy of that? They're right by the door if everybody didn't get a copy of that. No, I'm good, I just can't hold that at the same time. Does everybody have a copy? Middleton, did you wanna put that up there for me, if you could? Okay. I don't know if anybody's here that fits that. Oh, I thought you were the knitting guy. Oh, you're the tech guy too? Anyways, what we have here is a reconciliation to what Dr. McGoodwin talked about with the warrant article totals, and the impact that those warrant article totals would have, looks a lot like what's up on the screen without the ocean. And what you'll see is, the operating budget in A1, if you will, from last year was $31,477,247. This year's proposed operating budget is $31,455,410. I realize that the budget that we presented at the meeting last time was down $328,000, but after that meeting, the school board voted to ratify a SREA/CBA agreement, easy for me to say, for $307,153. So that gets added into the budget. Resulting budget is down $21,837 for a tax rate impact in A4 of 3 cents down. Security upgrades warrant article is for $141, because it was the same balance as last year's $141. Whoa, where you going? If you look in B3 and 4, there's no impact because that $141 was raised last year through taxation as well. There is a school bus replacement article on there. Five years ago, the decision was made to lease two buses under a five-year lease. I'm suggesting that because that lease has paid off, we continue to do that. We're saving a couple hundred thousand dollars a year by transporting the kids ourselves, but unfortunately, the older buses are costing me about $30,000 in maintenance every year, so it's essentially gonna, not cost us $39,000, it costs us closer to $9,000 to get the new buses. Then, that's a 0.6 impact per thousand, because that's in a warrant article that was not on in the past. The roofing improvements is something we've been doing, I believe this will be the fourth year. We've re-roofed the tech center, done a big project at Diznard, big project at Maple. Now we need to do some work at the middle school, that would be this year's $100,000. Again, no tax rate impact, because we've raised it in the past, so there's no impact on taxes. So I know that 3 plus 6 does not equal 2, but rounding does sometime get you when you do that, so the net impact of the budget would be the 0.03 per thousand, as discussed by Dr. McGoodwin. Now if we could switch over to the estimated revenues tab. Thank you, sir. Which is on the backside of that piece of paper that we handed out. Essentially, the only revenues that really changed was projecting an increase of $50,000 in tuition revenue. A few years ago, we voted to reduce the rate of tuition from $18,000 to $14,500, and we're actually getting more students, so we're getting more and more money by doing that. Thanks to Unity, we're having a lot of Unity students attend, so that's helping us with the tuition line. Then if you go down to B2, you're gonna see that the projected adequacy for the current year is $12,341,491. In B1, you'll see that the projected adequacy for next year is $12,077,963, a reduction of $263,528. And that's not being driven by less students, that's being driven by the reduction of the stabilization grant by the state, which is gonna be $225,000 a year for 20 years. So overall revenues are projected to decrease by $213,528, again, which was the number that Dr. McGoodwin had up there. That is a 0.30 impact on the tax rate.
Hey everybody, Jason Benoit, Ward 1. So it's a pretty simple, I guess more of a statement than a question. So, after all this work, as it stands right now, where several people thought there would be a 0.47 decrease in the tax rate, what we're looking at then, as it sits right now, is a 0.30 increase. 33 cent increase. So for all of the people who are saying, "Wow, that 0.47 decrease, that's not really gonna help anybody." that's not really going to help anybody anyway. Now, we're sitting here looking at it going, wow, it's now a 33-cent increase, another increase. So, I guess it's safe to say that those who were not in favor of the decrease, if we now increase from here on out, we'll probably be over a dollar per thousand increase. Something to think about, food for thought for all the seniors out there who barely can pay their taxes now. That's all I have to say for now.
If I may, Brian, this is also an opportunity for any other resident to make a statement or to respond to what they've heard or what they've been seeing. This is an opportunity for residents to publicly discuss the budget information that they have been watching and also reading about in the past several months.
Okay, so with that, we're going to open it up for citizens' comments. You'll have a chance to do that now. That way, we won't have to do it later on when we have a regular board meeting. So, it'll ask for whoever wants to speak, raise their hand. I'll call on you, come down, address the administration. We like to keep it to three minutes and let everybody get a chance to get their comments and questions in. So, with that, Mr. Osgood?
Joe Osgood, Ward 2. I don't know if we have to say that here, but I did. The previous speaker brought up something that's on my mind more than anything else about the time we just spent looking at how you make money, how you spend it in lump sums. My feeling is the seniors, the less-income people. You've already admitted, we've generated people that can only make $500 a week, and they're trying to live. And we never, ever hear the sad story about them. We hear the sad story about the children. And it's only 30 cents, it's only 46 cents, it's only this much. But that's been going on for 10 years. 10 times 46 is $460 on their taxes. It's, we've got to start thinking about the people in this community that can't afford everything that we want. You've been down line item after item, big item after big item, but not line item after line item, which I understand some of our School Board members took the time to do, and they believe, and I believe with them, that there's areas where we don't have to spend what we're spending. You mentioned $1.2 million decrease. They demanded it, they demanded it, you said it twice. It sounds like a big thing, and it's gone away. We really shouldn't be talking about that right now. We're looking at, what, a $300,000 decrease? A 1% decrease in a $31 million budget? When I was at the state, $31 million, we had to drop zeros so we didn't have to deal with all them little numbers. 1% in a $31 million budget should be able to be found. We've got to start looking at the people in this community that we're literally pushing out of here. Thank you.
Joe gave me a good segue. Carolyn Toll. I'm soon going to be 71 years old, and I am working full-time and sometimes 45 hours a week. Why? Because I want to keep my house, and I have to pay for my taxes. So, Joe, you are absolutely right on. I see there's a warrant article here, a line item for food service. And I'd really like that explained to me. I don't know what that's for. I'm assuming when I know what it's for, but I would like... I didn't do that. It's the line item for food service that I would like explained to me. Thank you.
The line item for food service, food service is basically a break-even program where we take in $650,000 of revenue that you see on the revenue side, and we expend $650,000 on the expense side. That's in there because it's not in the general fund budget, but it's in there to reconcile to the warrant article.
Hi, my name is Patty Arison. I'm a Stevens class of 1979, and I teach at River Valley Community College. I also work as a volunteer with the Reading Group Program at Southern State Correctional Facility, right across the river from here. I have a question, and based on your answer to that question, I have three comments to make. So, my question is, are there going to be teaching positions eliminated? And if so, what department? What department, then?
If things remain as listed, we are projecting there will be four positions at Stevens High School, an elementary school position. We're also anticipating, in fact, I have that on my PowerPoint, and I think I would like to just take a minute to bring that back up. Because there, when you reduce the budget, and you have the past several years been flatlined, the soft, what some people think is just something you can just find and identify, we've reached the point. The budget for the past four years has been flat with fixed cost increases, reductions in revenue, as well as collective bargaining agreements. We've been absorbing that, and now, the question is, well, let's keep on doing that. Or we've reached the point where the orange that we've been squeezing is dry. And so, now, we're talking about personnel that represents over 75% of the budget.
What departments?
I'm going to explain that. Just a minute, please. So, just to review for a moment, as I explained earlier, with the increases and notice the lack of growth. Now, we're at a point where the Board, which is their right, wishes to reduce further. If things continue in this direction, we are looking at reducing technology equipment by a little under a million dollars. That would necessitate, if equipment fails, our dedicated teachers will not use technology. And so, much of our curriculum today is based on technology. Curriculum specialists. In 2011, I will tell you, the three elementary schools, the middle school and the high school in this community were absolutely disconnected. Hard-working men and women, dedicated administrators, but they were disconnected. And that's why we had the failure rate at the middle school and the high school. We've been addressing that by creating the connectivity between the elementary schools, the middle, middle and the high. This will be a step backward. An elementary teaching position, this is due to enrollment. Knowing that, however, we do have some very challenging students. And so, what appears to be a small class size at times is done intentionally because of the needs of the children. A district-wide school psychologist, a crisis counselor at Stevens High School, an assessment coordinator, $6,000. It's going to necessitate children, instead of taking SATs and other assessments at Stevens High School, will travel to other communities. A high school special education teacher. Because of this reduction, as well as the other factors of adequacy aid and the collective bargaining agreement, we are going to hopefully only reduce one teaching position that's now moving toward three. Director of Adult Education. We're hoping to be able to, because of the budget reductions, be able to reassign that position to another administrator. It won't be the same. Four paraprofessional positions, reduction of textbooks, defer maintenance and repairs. You can save a lot of money by deferring maintenance. You can save a lot of dough. Sometimes, you have no choice. But when Melissa Lewis, the principal of Diznard Elementary School, needed a half a dozen buckets in her school when it rained, that's problematic. Assistant staff development, professional development, is one of the variables that attracted me to the Claremont School District. How the district invested in its teachers, supported its teachers with the goal of improving instruction. Assistant athletic director, athletic trainer, and an administrative assistant. That list represented about a half million dollars. But, you know, the argument has been, when we are looking to try to meet that reduction of $328,000 or meet that reduction of $1.2 million below this current fiscal year, we were looking at what's called saturation studies, the number of students versus the teacher. And though one may say, well, you know, here's a class at Stevens High School with 11 students and one teacher, let's just eliminate that class. But when you do that, there's a residual effect. You start eliminating classes, and you start compromising the options of students. And so, you have fewer options, and therefore, you have students who may not be able to get into a class or have that opportunity to advance the way they would like. And it might even residual to the point where advanced placement classes have to be compromised as well. You don't see it. The buses come in the morning, they drop off kids, and the buses drive them away at the end of the day. And everything's looking fine. But, believe me, with a budget, with a budget that has been flatlined, as I explained here, with a budget that has, over time, not been going out of control, and with the state saying, Claremont and other municipalities, you know, I'm hearing, and I very much respect Joe and other residents about senior citizens. But if you were to look and just review what we have been trying to do in the past four years, how can the tax rate be going up when this budget is basically flat? So, if the answer is, let's just continue to reduce the budget, I guess the question is, do we resolve the tax issue on the back of children? Now, some may say, oh, come on, McGudwin. You're playing on the emotional strings. In truth, we can definitely do things differently, but students will have fewer options. If that's what the community wishes, if that is the community's desire, that will be the outcome. But it's my responsibility to say, whoa, I don't believe, as superintendent, I arrived here, I don't think as superintendent, my administrative team and the School Board have been out of control with the reduction of state aid, with the fixed cost increases, et cetera. Does the community want this line to go like that? If they do, that is their choice, but there will be a residual impact on what's happening now.
May I make my comments now?
Please.
Thank you very much for your very detailed answer. In fact, I agree with you. I do see a difference. As I said, I am, I teach at River Valley Community College. I have taught in the Claremont Adult Education Program, and I did my student teaching here at Stevens. What I am seeing, and I am in a very strong position to tell you this, is that you absolutely cannot afford to cut teaching positions. I am seeing students who are not prepared to do college work. And I have to tell you, I'm very sorry to tell you, but this is your job to deal with. I am seeing students from Stevens who are less well-prepared than their counterparts from Fall Mountain or Lebanon or Keene. It seems to me that this is something that we need to deal with. So, I agree with you, absolutely. What I find is that students are not prepared to read critically and analytically. So, I am going to advocate that, or I'm going to suggest to you that it is very important not to cut English positions. English is the foundational skill. It is the skill that you need for any other, any other classes. I know that STEM is trending right now. But you need strong reading skills, critical and analytical skills, in order to do math, in order to do science, in order to study vocational programs, nursing, computer science, criminal justice, you name it. You need to have critical reading skills. And that's what I am not seeing in the students who are coming from Stevens. And there is a cost involved. It does not occupy a nice, neat box in the budget spreadsheet, but there is a cost. Because when students go to college and they are not prepared to do college work, then what happens is, they and their parents are spending money to very little effect because their first one or two years at college is, in essence, remedial. It's getting them up to where they should be. And that means they only have two years left of their college education to do college work. They're not getting as much out of their four-year or college programs as they could. This is equally true if they are going to the trades. My husband is an electrical contractor. He's had many, many young men, young people as apprentices. And so, you know, you may be reading a novel, but you are using the skills that you are going to use when you are studying the electrical code book or you're writing a manual describing how to use a computer program. I understand the difficulties of the elderly people who live in Claremont, but I know that, but the approach that I would like to see is not reducing taxes, but increasing the tax base. And one way you do that is by attracting people to move into your town, by attracting businesses to move into your town. And the way you do that is by having a strong school system that has the support of the School Board and the school community. That's what attracts people, that's what attract businesses. What I don't understand, and this is my question now for you, it seems to me that it is the job of the voters or it is the job of the city management to say, the tax rate is too high, we're going to vote it down. Your job, I would have thought, would be to advocate the school that you represent and the students who attend that school. As you said earlier, as Dr. McGudwin said earlier in his PowerPoint presentation, what we need is a flexible workforce, a workforce made up of people who know how to learn new skills when they need to. And that, I would say, is your lookout, not cutting the budget and not cutting critical pieces from that budget. So, thank you very much. That's what I have to say.
Hi, I'm Heather Irish, Ward 3. I sat on this board for several years when we had to ask the taxpayers for some serious help. And they stood behind us, and they gave us that help. When we were looking to make Stevens High School what it is today, and we asked the taxpayers for help, again, they stood behind us and they helped us. So, now, the taxpayers are asking you a favor. And what I'm hearing is a board that wants to do that and an administration that does not. And I'm concerned by that. I'm concerned by that for several reasons. One of the first things that bothers me about this presentation, and I'm one of the first, let me say, that saw the disconnect between the schools. And it was the first thing I yelled about and screamed about when I was elected. What I'm seeing is improvement. I see, oh, rock on. I see, "Oh, rock on, we gotta keep attendance up, rock on, we've gotta, we've gotta help these kids get to college." Well, thank you for doing your job. Thank you for doing your job. I'm not understanding why that means that it comes out of these people's pockets yet again. I totally understand what you're saying. My daughter was the one of the only students from Stevens High School to take classes at River Valley, because it was offered to Stevens. The only student. And the reason that occurred was because it wasn't offered by guidance, nobody mentioned it in guidance, it wasn't even a thought in guidance. So let me understand, what you're saying to me is that you're concerned that our kids aren't going to college, but yet you didn't ask them? My daughter graduated from college. I know a lot of her class, and I know a lot of the parents sitting out here, either are in college or graduated from college. So again, excuse me if I have to say that I think our kids are doing pretty damn well. I also know that trades are the biggest thing right now that's going on. That's the conversation that's happening. It's not college, it's trades. So again, I don't mind, I'm saying to you, be honest, if we're gonna be honest, be honest. These people have asked for something. And what I'm hearing instead are threats, and "This is what's gonna happen, and it's gonna be bad." You know, not for nothing, I just sat and figured it out. I just looked it up while I was sitting here, actually. The amount of people in Claremont, and I believe it's around 33,000, the amount of students that I see here, well, it's 13, sorry. The amount of students up here was 1,800, which is, if I'm wrong, and I'll ask, some people here are a lot better at math, but that's around 6%? Well, you know, I love how you always do that with somebody who doesn't agree with you, Brian. But anyway, but anyway, what I'm saying, and I get that, but you know what, it happens constantly, it's just amazing to me. It's fine, I didn't see three-minute limit.
I'm Matt Bean, Ward Two. You said, "We wanna be honest, let's be honest." So vouchers are literally about to gut the public school system, and we wanna cut school funding. You wanna cut school funding? Yeah, that's what you wanna do, you wanna cut school funding. You wanna cut a crisis counselor? When I got up here and literally told you, two weeks ago, that that job saves children's lives, saves their lives, and you still voted to cut it. You! You gave him the bottom line.
We gave him a bottom line, we told him not to cut those people. We did not ask them to cut. The presentation presented was false information. Dare you, I dare you.
I make a motion, we overrule the chair. I make a motion, we overrule the chair. I make a motion, we overrule, Rebecca's second, I mean, who's second?
Taking a break. All in favor? All right, we've got four, we're continuing the meeting. This meeting is continuing, go ahead.
Okay.
We are the board, this isn't the Brian Raff school board. No, stop interrupting the public. No, we chat, this is why we're taking a break. No, we're continuing the meeting.
Okay. I'm here for the kids.
For the record, the chairman is leaving the meeting, we are continuing, we are the board, four members have voted in the affirmative, we run the meeting, not Mr. Raff. He can walk away all he wants, this meeting is continuing. Go for it, Matt. You can't overrule us, Brian, you cannot. Chris, you're done. The vice chair has to do is say, "We're gonna take a break, and that's it." There's no vote, take a break. Five-minute break, we take a break. It's the same way we do it every time. We just overruled your decision, we already took a break, we're not in the meeting. We just overruled your decision. The board is made up of seven people, not one. Four of us just voted. Yeah, Robert School says majority rules, take a break.
Can I just say one more thing? Can I just say one more thing? And I'll sit down. The fact of the matter is, is the children are our future, and we should be investing in our children and not cutting away from them.
Mr. Raff, you gonna sit down, or you gonna walk away?
I'm serious, I'm gonna speak. Now, don't interrupt me, please. You were just grandstanding, you were just grandstanding, and we know that. Yeah, we do know that. Have you started the timer yet? Time me, come on. Mr. McGudwin, you made a couple of presentations up here, I've seen that bar graph several times, I think it's impressive. I just wanna know, your presentation about the need for furthering education, is it your suggestion, since you showed it twice, that this budget cut would compromise that so our children in this town will no longer be able to go to college? And they won't be able to get those good jobs? Because that's sort of what we were being led with when you made that presentation. I like correlations, I like there to actually be some meat to what's going on with the presentation you give. It didn't seem to me that they went together. I think the budget cut as they have presented it will not harm our children significantly, or at all for that matter, to a standard where I would be worried about the welfare of my children, or any children in this district. I did wanna ask a question, though, of Mike, because I think Mike can answer this. The psychologist position that people are concerned about getting cut, that is going to be supplemented by contracted services, correct? So those assessments will still get done? Correct, okay. What about the crisis counselor position? Are there contingencies in place to cover that? So emergency room, essentially. The board, as far as I know, did not suggest or request that they were cut, correct? Could somebody verify, deny, or...
The school board, sir, said you do the heavy lifting.
Okay.
You do the heavy lifting administration. This is our cut, you figure out how it's gonna happen. We struggled, and it took a great deal of time to get here, because the ideas we put on the table, we don't like. We don't have, what some would say, padding, that we can easily just pick away and everything remains the same. And now, because of the increases that I explained, you know, I'm not sure what you heard me say, but if you look at that PowerPoint, how can you have fixed cost increases?
I know that, please, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I've only got three minutes. I get what you're saying, so my point is $32,500, one-tenth of a percent of the total budget. I bet if you wiggle a little bit, you could find it somewhere for that. Because a lot of people are concerned about that. Otherwise, I think that the budget as it stands makes sense. I think these people here are not going off half-cocked, I think a lot of work was put into this. I'm pretty sure the lady back here was talking about English positions. I'm almost certain you guys did studies on enrollment in those classes before you came up with these cuts, correct? There were, what do we call those, what do they call those? Saturation studies, right? So there was some research done with this, right? You didn't just arbitrarily come up with three or four cuts, and you're like, "Well, we'll just cut these." So there, it's not just, "Oh, we're gonna cut three English positions." You actually did some research as to how many kids are taking those classes, am I correct? I'm right, right? So this isn't just somebody going off half-cocked. Not you, I'm saying to you, these people didn't just go off half-cocked with these things. They came up, and frankly, am I done? I'm gonna wrap it up. So I guess, to say that these folks over here didn't do any research, didn't put any time in, and came up with this budget, and this ratified it, and they don't care about anybody, is very disingenuous. I think that people care about the kids, but I think there needs to be some balance between caring about the kids and education, and not breaking everybody in the town, too. There we go, I'm done.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. I was a selectman in my town for six years, so I know what it's like being on that side of the table, and I respect the job that you have to do. I know the balances that you have to make, and the different constituencies that you have to answer to, so I respect that. I would just like to give you my perspective as an administrator, because what I see happening is a polarization and a demonizing of the two sides. And we're not gonna ever get anywhere if we continue to do that. As administrators, we were asked, after the superintendent came forth with his recommended budget, to sit down and not make recommendations, because none of what we gave you were recommendations. They were an answer to a request by the board to meet a certain number. And I want to be very clear about that, because that's important to me. It's important to me as an educator, it's important to me that the parents who send their kids to this school know that, and that the students who are in this school know that. I did not make these recommendations. What it felt like was Sophie's Choice. So when I'm looking at a foreign language teacher, or an English teacher, or a crisis counselor, or an administrative assistant, all whom are doing excellent work in our schools, and who are all collectively responsible for the success that Stevens High School has, and the growth that we continue to see in this school, you're asking each of the administrators to say, "Which of these valuable entities can you do without?" And our original answer to you was, "None of them." And I stand before you today to say that we still feel that it's none of them. And we will not be able to do what we are doing without these people in our schools. Last year, when the cuts were made, our maintenance budgets, our supply budgets, all of those ancillary budgets were cut. There's nothing left in those lines. And what I also want the public to know is that days and days, hours and hours of meetings were set with administration in closed rooms, putting numbers and people and positions up on a board, and rating those positions based on what kind of effect would they have on the strategic plan that this board approved, what effect would they have on students, on attendance rates, on our goals, all of those things. And we put it up on a rating system, and then, like Sophie's Choice, we chose which of the children we were gonna put up for adoption. This has been very, very painful, and I just want people to understand that no one on either side of this table has gone off half-cocked about any of this. They've done their work, they've looked through it line by line, and so have we. The difference is, that as educators, who you've entrusted to run these buildings and to run this district, we are telling you with our hearts and our souls, that if you want to continue to see growth, we need these people. And without them, there will be less growth, and things will change. And that's all I wanted to say, because I think it's important that people understand that if we keep going at each other, we're not gonna get to where we need to get. And everyone's in here for all the right reasons, I truly believe that. Everyone's here because they want the best for education in Claremont, and people wanna stay in their homes, and people wanna work. So thank you for listening.
Andrea Wilson, Ward One. First, I would like to say that, with all due respect, at my job, I have a board of directors, and if they tell me to do something, and I have to do it. If I don't do it, there's consequences. I think by not following a directive that your board gives you is just, is not, I'll use preschool terms, it's not okay. Like I said, there would be consequences. And I worry about you not following those directives for teachers' sake. It worried me because, what kind of message are you sending to them? There's new curriculum going on all the time. If a educator said, "You know, I don't think it's just for the best of the children that we do it this way," they probably would've been reprimanded, they would've been written up, they possibly could've been fired. That's one point that I just wanted to make, that that just kinda scared me, and I don't think it sent a great message. Second of all, in my three minutes, which I don't, did not read in the minutes, not the minutes, the agenda for this meeting, is something I'm seeing all the time, is, Brian, you cutting people off, you interrupting, and I've been wanting to go to one of these meetings forever, but you know what? What I have to say, you're gonna cut me off, you're gonna shut me down, because you don't like to hear it. Wait, right? Your body language at every meeting stinks. It's embarrassing when I have people come over from, like, college roommates or whatever, watching a meeting, seeing your body language. You did it tonight, it's obvious, that's what you do, because you don't like what you're hearing. And I'm tired of it. You're elected from your board members, we did not put you as the chair. You have no other authority than anybody else sitting there. The only way you have more authority than them, is they give you that power, and that's it. And when you don't like to hear something, you shut us, you shut the people right down. You did it the other night to a gentleman, when Chris was trying to answer his question. It's wrong. Now, on a positive side, I just wanna say that I have been speaking to a lot of teachers for many, many months. I've tried to get their input, I try to just listen to them, and teachers, we have some of the most dedicated teachers ever in Claremont. They spend time and energy, they put a lot of effort into their work that they don't even get paid for. So I just wanna give them kudos, and I wanna make sure that they know that I, along with many other people, support them 110%, and I don't know what I can do, other than to support all positions. And I just appreciate their unwavering dedication and their commitment. And I guess I wasn't aware that all the positions, or three out of the four positions at Stevens, are going to be in the English department? No? Okay, so that was, because I worry about that, I compare like the program of studies from 2012, 13 to now, and the English department is really lacking a lot of the classes that they used to have. So that is a concern of mine. So, did you want to say something? You had...
Good evening, I'm Debbie Laffin from Ward One. I'm here on behalf of the entire school district in not making any of the cuts that you have proposed. I respect what you have said, I respect the fact that you feel that cuts need to be made, but I hate to see us go backwards. I'm here, though, also on behalf of the Claremont Adult Learning Center Program. Cutting the director's position will not only hurt the students of Stevens High School, but that of many students throughout Sullivan County. We are in crucial time in adult education, a time where we are connecting even more with economic development, college and career readiness, and the needs of the communities we serve. In the case of Claremont Adult Learning Center, it is not just Claremont that this program serves, it's the whole of Sullivan County. All of the students that this center serves could be part of the economic development of Claremont and beyond. Without a... Without a dedicated director who absolutely knows the ins and outs, the expectations, the standards, this program will not have the relationship building it needs to continue its growth. The Adult Learning Center saw decreased funding in the first two years Amy was here in the district, specifically the Adult Diploma Program, due to low enrollment. The program has since received increased funding over the past two years, due to increased enrollment. I know Amy has sent you data from the last four years, and letters from current and former students explaining how she personally helped them during their time at the Claremont Adult Learning Center. I am in hopes that each of you has read, studied, digested, all the data Amy has provided for you, that supports the needs she can provide for all students. I hope you have read, as they are, I hope you have read the students' letters, as they are very strong testaments to what this program has provided, particularly what Amy has provided for each one of these students, enabling them opportunity in their lives, in their futures, that without her personal dedication would not have been possible. Between last year and a half of this year, Amy has helped 55 students associated with Stevens High School graduate from the Claremont Adult High School, or recover classes to graduate from Stevens High School, in turn, cutting the rate of dropouts in our district. The school year is not done yet, and she is still enrolling students. In closing, I am in hopes that I have provided more feedback, convincing those of you who are on the fence, that not just anyone can step into the role of adult ed director, with all its standards that have to be met, CCRS in Oyoa, data that has to be entered and maintained on a daily basis, the list goes on. But, most importantly, meeting the needs of each individual who walks through her door, actually meeting the learning styles of all individuals, whether through classes that are provided, online distance learning, I will, just one second, I'm sorry, or Amy herself taking on the teaching role in any subject area that the student needs, so as to make sure the student succeeds while I am being supportive of Amy as an individual director in program she provides. I am also a taxpayer, that can see the importance of the program and the dedication Amy has to this program, to the Claremont School District, to the taxpaying citizens who would otherwise have to find a means through very likely raising the tax rates to provide services to these students having to look outside of Sullivan County. In turn, losing the revenue that each student brings to our community, the possible workforce they could lose to outside communities, just a minute, please, I'm wrapping it up, and possible higher dropout rates, which would certainly be detrimental. Are we not trying to bring businesses, companies, taxpaying infrastructure into Claremont? What is the first and for many, for most importantly, look to in making the decision to move to Claremont, but to become in our community, but that of our school district? And how we provide for our students? How we all provide?
After everyone's had a chance to speak once, people will be allowed to speak again. Anybody else like to speak?
Me, me, Ryan's. I live on Park Ave, so whatever ward that is, I think it's 1. 1? Ward 1. I have a terrible cold, so I'm sorry for this. I'll be short, because I don't want to cough in your ears. I've been school counselor at Stevens, this is my second year, and these cuts obviously break all of our hearts, because Stevens and the Claremont District are just, like, we're really close. Like, we all work as a team. And as a student support person, who works with kids every day, the crisis counselor cut is the one that breaks my heart the most, because I see how often kids need the crisis counselor. And yes, we work with a crisis counselor, but as Cory said, if the crisis counselor is gone, the plan's going to basically be emergency room. And now, when kids have a mental health issue at school, they have a support they can go to at school. And yes, while we can assist with that, it's not our main priority, so to speak, because that's not what I'm trained in exclusively. And I think, and again, board, I understand, these are not your cuts, and I know administration's heartbroken about the cuts. I understand all of that. I just, it just makes me really sad, because I'm someone, I'm one of the young adults that Claremont is always courting to come live in Claremont for the rest of their lives and raise their families here, and cuts like these, I'm like, you know, it's hard. And I understand you guys have a hard decision to make, and I understand the voters have a hard decision to make, but I think overall, we're doing a pretty good job at Stevens and in the district. I think you guys have heard today how good we're doing. And I get emails from parents, and I know my colleagues do as well, and Frank, you worked at Stevens before I was there, but you know how good a school that is? Like, you were a counselor. I might have your old office, I don't know. But it's a great place to work, and the kids are so good. And these cuts, I fear, are just going to diminish that. And I know someone said they felt the cuts wouldn't dramatically affect our students, and I have to respectfully disagree with that, because I see every day how these cuts are going to affect our kids. If these cuts go through, and you have to cut teachers, bigger class sizes, less personalized instruction for students, if you cut crisis counselors, again, the mental health issue, I can go down the list and tell you everything, but I know you guys have heard that a million times tonight. But yeah, just wanted to share my two cents. That's all.
Thank you. Am I allowed to ask questions and get answers from Middleton and...
Absolutely.
A couple of things that have concerned me was, you said that the $100,000 that was in the budget for maintenance on the schools was to replace the roof at Disnard, because Melissa Lewis had five buckets on the floor? I'm not sure, I haven't paid all that close of attention, but was the roof replaced at Disnard?
What we said was, this is the fourth year in a row we've put a warrant article out there for $100,000 that the roof repairs. We've done repairs at Disnard, we've done repairs at the Tech Center, we've done repairs at Maple. This year, we're targeting the middle school.
But was the roof repaired at Disnard?
Yeah, yeah. A major section of the roof has been repaired at Disnard, not the entire roof.
Okay.
Just sections.
But the other $70,000 that went to paving the parking lot, was that part of the improvement budget?
That was basically part of money that we were able to save through last year's budget to do some additional repairs to the buildings.
Okay, so right then and there, you're telling me that there's $70,000 that was saved, because you've overbudgeted. I've looked at the budget, all right? And right now, you're trying to scare all of these students and all of these teachers that they're going to lose their positions, because they're trying to cut the budget. I don't believe that's right, Middleton, and you know that, that it's not right. You're trying to scare people into cutting the budget, which I think there's plenty of line items on that budget that can be tightened up and cut, that wouldn't affect a single teaching position, or any student that goes to this school. I think the teachers are doing a great job, and I don't think any of them need to be cut. I think it's your job, as the administrator, superintendent, to tighten the budget up, which you know as well as I do, it can be. I don't need a comment, I don't need a comment, but I just wanted to, I don't care about that graph. It means nothing to me. I've seen the line items. There's room for cuts. Thank you.
I am a teacher here at Stevens High School. I'm also a parent of one Stevens graduate and another who is about to graduate. There's just a few things that I want to say as I've been listening to this, and I've been listening very carefully over the last several meetings, and it's really difficult work. I listened to what Mr. Osgood had to say about making a small cut at the state level of a small percentage, and thinking about that, and after looking at what Dr. McGudwin said, I'm thinking, there is no such thing as a small cut, because that's attached to resources, it's attached to people. And when you make a state, or a cut at the state level, it looks like now it's on the back of Claremonter's to make up for those cuts. So, the other thing that's challenging and difficult, as I'm looking at it, is that you give a directive, and it's an important directive, but you also have to own the consequences of that directive. And that's where the challenge comes in, because no one really wants to see any of these things happen. No one wants to see teachers leave. No one wants to see a crisis counselor leave. I know what a huge impact that would make. I know as a parent, thinking of losing a world language teacher, I mentioned to you before, and I might as well just put it out there, that when I, I had school choice when I was a resident of Brownsville, Vermont. Since moved to Claremont, I had a choice to choose where my daughter could go to high school. She chose Stevens High School herself, because it offered German. German wasn't something that's offered at a lot of high schools in this area. German isn't something that's, and it's something that she loved. She had studied it early on in her younger elementary years, and wanted to do more of it. And it had German and softball, those two very specific things that were interesting to her, is why she chose Stevens High School. The thing about it is that I've given almost 15 years of my career to this community. I've put my children in schools here in this community. Claremont has always been attractive to me, as a citizen, as a teacher. The unfortunate reality is watching year after year of the same sort of thing, these cuts that come about, where there is an emotional attachment, as you're sitting there watching your colleagues have to stand up and beg for their jobs, and to tell you why they're valuable to this community, with a community that doesn't seem to value them. You can make a blanket statement that teachers are valuable, but yet, we're going to cut some of you. You know, next year, it could be me. I don't see why not. I'm no different, no more special than any other teacher here. And so what I have to say is that at one point in time, this school district was extraordinarily special to me, and still is, and very attractive to my family. If I had to make the decision again for my daughter, I don't know if I would. If we're going to cut German, I don't know if I would make that choice. The thing about it, I just want to wrap up by saying, I have always believed in this community. I have always believed in the talents, the abilities, and the gifts that your children have brought into my classroom and on this stage, year after year. I just, and I love being part of this community, and I want the community to believe in itself. So thank you.
Hello, I'm Marian Lovett. I'm a Stevens graduate and the former representative, or the student representative on the school board for the past two years. Talking about this and discussing this budget is very near and dear to my heart, because I worked with many of you for long meetings, in which I do know you all have good character and good intentions. But when researching our school district, the results are alarming. On GreatSchools.org, Stevens High School's rated 4 out of 10, Bluff School's rated 3 out of 10, Disnard is rated 3 out of 10, and Claremont Middle School's rated 2 out of 10. And so when we're deciding to make these cuts, we're deciding how to better our school district, how to make these ratings go up. On SchoolDigger, Claremont is rated 130th out of 153 New Hampshire school districts. And then on NICH, they do a full report card on how to grade schools, basically, in New Hampshire. And the highest grade we got was a B+ for our teachers. These are our teachers who are getting the best grade out of anything in Claremont School District. I mean, our academics are C+. Our teachers are a B+, our diversity is B-, clubs and activities a B-, college prep's a C+, which teachers help get you ready for college. I know, I'm a freshman myself. And then the ratings online is alarming. I mean, CMS has 1 out of 5 stars, and when you're reading the reviews, it's a lot because of bullying, which a crisis counselor helps for. So when you cut that position, who's the kid going to go to when they're getting bullied in school, and they don't understand how to handle the situation? Because yes, it may start at middle school, but I do know it flows into high school. Well, one great review was for Disnard Elementary School, it was 3.8 out of 5 stars, and the review just focuses on the teachers itself. And so when you have the only highest reviews being 4 out of 5 stars, talking just about teachers, and any other review you look at being 1 out of 5 stars, talking about anything else, I would seriously take in consideration, when you're looking at these cuts, look at your values, look at the things that your own citizens here are telling you they find important. And when you're actually getting rated by other people in the state, and if you want to increase your tax base to decrease a dollar on the citizen, and they're telling you that it's the teachers that they're coming to the state for, and they're telling you that it's other things that they don't really care about as much, you should listen to them. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I'm John Young. I spoke at the last meeting. My question, and I'm going to pitch it to the board, and I'm fine with dialogue and answers, so let's try to avoid the mishegoss of earlier. If, I heard earlier someone on the board say the board didn't want these cuts. If you didn't want these cuts, why didn't you support the first budget that Dr. McGudwin pitched with increases for what the district actually needs? That's all I got.
Why didn't you support the first budget with the increases for what the district actually needs, so you can break the cycle of being a poorly rated school?
You asked a question, you deserve the answer. It wasn't that we supported the cuts, we're not telling him what to cut, we didn't necessarily support what he wanted to cut. The four of us that supported that budget on the 20th firmly believe, out of a $31 million budget, there's way more than $328,000 we can save in other places, without touching a teacher, without touching a position. We did not want teachers cut. We put that in our directive. So, to your question, which is legitimate, we've supported the cuts. We didn't support what they wanted to cut. That's on them. That's why we didn't hold them accountable. This board has not asked them to cut one single thing. We're giving them a bottom line, which as a board, is the only authority we have. We don't have the authority to tell them to do anything for any line-up. All we can do, and the only thing we have as authorities of what, is to produce a budget and give it to them. So I want to be very clear on that. We're not proposing those cuts. Some of these people works their butts off to find a lot of areas in this budget where there's a lot of overbudgeting going on, where there's a lot of money that could be trimmed, just like we have to do at our homes, to cut the budget to make it fit to what we make for income. That's all we're asking, is to treat the citizen the same way we treat ourselves at home. You know, I've been doing this for 18 years, and it's the first time I've ever had a board that actually crafted a budget with a specific intent to try to help the taxpayer. Never been done before. It's way overdue. But to your point, this board has not directed this administration to cut anything, or anybody, with giving them a dollar amount that they need to find a way to live within, just like we do at home.
So, but that, correct, and I could be wrong, if I'm wrong, correct me. The very first budget, with no cuts in it, where it was increases, why didn't you support that, if you supported the school? That's my question.
Can I answer that? Can I answer that? I think, I think the thing that we need to just remember is that there's two people up here who have worked for the school district before. So we have a little bit of an inside understanding of how things operate. With that said, I personally did not support the 1.7 million increase, because I feel, and after reviewing the budget a lot of times, line by line, over and over and over, I feel that there are other places that we could scale back a little bit. Maybe we don't overestimate so much. Maybe we don't make it so that there's so much money at the end of the year that we need to spend it down and shuffle it around. I think that that's what people aren't really understanding. If you...
And if you take a moment to go through the budget, line by line, I think that a lot of people would find that there are areas that are overestimated on by a considerable amount. And, and if you take those areas that are maybe overestimated on a little bit, so that there's room for flexibility to move mine around during the year as you need it, if you take those areas and cut it back a little bit, you might not need to cut a crisis counselor. And I think if people, I'm shaking, I'm so scared, but, I think if people would just take a step back for a minute, because I know it is scary, thinking about losing teachers, losing my best friend, the social worker. It's scary, losing people. But if you step back for a second and actually look at the numbers and look at the budget that we were given, you would probably find a lot of areas yourself, without me having to tell you, that could be adjusted in a way that would be more beneficial to savings in the budget. Does that make any sense?
Without cost cuts to the teachers.
How much does $70,000 paving job do with that? Because that extra money. How many more times is that gonna happen? That, like, that's just, you can't just page $70,000, you got extra money.
Come up and speak for us, some comments.
Was that helpful at all? It's okay if you disagree with me.
Great thing about America, we allow that.
True story.
She says it a lot nicer than I do.
And I elaborate more if you ever want to.
So, I have David Putnam, Ward Two. Thank you all for participating tonight. I know it's how hard it is. I did it for seventeen years. It was my practice as school board chair for a lot of years. If we wished for a break in the meeting, that I would get a consensus from the whole board. And it doesn't require a motion, but a consensus is really a good approach, where the whole board, and you are respected, and you're respecting the board, so that's a little advice. Okay? It was also a common practice, when I was on the board, that if there were monies left over at the end of the year, we returned them as a fund balance. And, and then, if we knew that there was a parking lot needed to be paved, we put it on the budget as a line item, so the public was aware of what they were spending money on. A lot of years ago, maybe thirty years ago, the school district had extra money, and they approached American Plate Glass to put in a bunch of new doors throughout the buildings, so that they could spend the money, because it was money at the end of the year. And I said, boy, you know, that's just not a really good way to run business. And I'm, I'm thinking, what if it was return to the taxpayers, knowing that next year you want to put on the warrant article, repair of doors, or paving, or whatever? You're being honest and transparent with your voters, and, and you're, and you're sticking true to the budget with line items. I know that there has to be a little bit of wiggle room in a budget, just like we all have, to cover the unexpected costs that you don't know are gonna happen. Alan Dameron called me one day when I was school board chair and said, David, we got an issue. The ceiling just caved in. And it was a serious issue. Well, we fixed it with money from that budget that year. We didn't go out and borrow more money. And how we fixed it is that, by, I looked at the budget, first of all, he froze it. He eliminated some money that was gonna be spent on certain line items. He found a little bit of the wiggle room, so we could repair the roof that time. And I think Alan was around $400,000, if I was right. Am I right? Two years, okay. Yep. So, so, that's, those are my comments, and thank you all for what you're doing. Yep.
See if anybody else hasn't, wants to speak. Anybody that hasn't spoken yet?
We're gonna get away.
Yeah, we're gonna, we'll get some people that haven't spoken.
Good evening. My name is Elie Phaleen. I am, I live in Ward Two, and I'm also a teacher at Maple Avenue School. First of all, I just want to say that I am appalled at the behavior by some of these adults in this room. We have more respect in our schools than what I've seen tonight. And I am really hoping that there are no students watching this meeting tonight, because I'm embarrassed as a teacher. It's appalling. Secondly, we have hired Dr. McGudwin and his folks at the Dow Building to come up with a, to produce a budget that they believe is fair and is what is best for our students. Our motto is that we should always do what is best for our students. And I, I, I know we need cuts, I understand that. However, you cannot make an educated decision unless you have been in the schools and see things firsthand. So, come into our schools, visit us, we want you to come. But as a teacher, sitting here, listening to folks talk about this so lightly, it frankly is disrespectful. I appreciate the board putting the hard work into it. I appreciate the, particularly, Dr. McGudwin and Mr. McNeil working so hard to produce this budget. And I, we need to do what is right and what is best for students. Thank you.
I often get this stated to me, I don't envy the position you're in. I do understand. I will tell you, I heard the analogy used earlier of the orange that you've been squeezing, Dr. McGudwin. I represent a lot of people that don't, can't even afford the orange. So, I, I will say, I think a large mistake happened tonight, as far as this meeting not being televised on public access. So, social media is lit up right now with complaints, and I know that you probably would have had a larger turnout in this room. And I even watched the last meeting where it was discussed, moving to this location and having it televised, and I think it would have been proper to notify people that that wasn't gonna happen. Probably could have come up with some way to stream this on social media at least, so it could be out there. But, I've been sitting here getting messages from people that would have been here tonight, but they thought they could see this at home. So, I don't have anything else really to say tonight, except for kudos to the young lady at the end for trying to maintain decorum earlier. Thank you.
I'm not a registered voter, but my name is Jesse Baril. I live in Ward Three. Thank you. So, I'm not gonna say too much here this evening, but the lady who was here before me mentioned that she thinks that you should be able to come to Stevens or to one of our school districts to view a day of classes. When I was here on the twentieth, I did extend an invitation to members of the board to come to Stevens, so I would like to reiterate that for starters. And we've been focusing, we've selected a few students who we think would be good for you all to follow, and we're going to be working on getting invitations out to you individually in the very near future. And you can expect that probably within the next week, because we're going to focus on the week of the twelfth, along with the sixteenth and the seventeenth. We'll be very flexible with whatever times work for you as members. I understand that there are some time concerns. So, honestly, whatever we can do, we'll rearrange anything. Thank you.
An interesting meeting today, having sat on the board for a number of years, and just where it's gone. And someone had mentioned that they had looked up prior to coming up here, just gone online to get some information. So, I went on just to say, what is the school board's job? And the first thing came up on Google of the role of school boards is, the local school board is critical public link to public schools. Whether elected or appointed, school board members serve their communities in several important ways. First and foremost, school boards look out for students. Education is not a line item on the school board's agenda, it is the only item. What I struggle, having gone back and watched on TV and looked at the budget, and looked at many budgets prior, is I don't understand whether or not this budget is driven by savings, or whether this budget is driven by, this is the proper amount of money that's, that should be made available for our students. The voters will ultimately decide whether or not they want to provide that much money. There's the balance. There was someone over here that said, we need balance, and I absolutely agree. And I think we have balance when we have a school board that provides a budget that meets the needs of our students. And they support it, and they all get behind, they say, this is in the best interest of the kids of Claremont. And the balance comes on the other side, when the voters say, I completely understand what you said, but we're not willing to vote those dollars in. We can't afford it. Go back and do another one. And there's where the balance comes in. But right now, I see that, I, I don't really know how the budget meets that need for our students. And I've always seen the school board, your primary responsibility is education, and as an advocate for the kids, because kids don't get to vote. They just get to work their way from one class to the next. So, I'm a little confused when it comes to the budget of just quite what we have here and what the objective was. Separate question. But Rebecca, I, I would like, I have looked through the budgets here many, many times, and was not able to identify the kind of numbers that you were throwing out there. I think we ought to have a working session. In the past, there was a working session that was put together by the board, sometimes it was atrociously early, or it went late. But if there are those areas that are out there, I'd love to understand what they are. If they're 200, 300, 400,000 dollar chunks, let's start to add those up. Because if you're seeing them and others are not, and especially the administration may not be seeing them, then this becomes a completely different conversation. So, if those are there, I, my recommendation to the board is, please have an information session sometime over the next week or two. Let's identify it strictly for board members to say, these are the areas that I think. And let's start to lay out the list of what those items are. Doesn't mean they're going to, anything's gonna happen of it, but I'd like to understand it in a little bit more detail. And maybe you did and I missed it, but now's an opportunity to do it again. So, thank you very much. Anybody that speaks that hasn't spoken before? Anybody that wants to speak a second time?
Joe Osgood, Ward Two. I've got a question for the administration and for the school board, and it's the same question. Did either one of yous at the, after this proposal was made, say, hey, let's roll up our sleeves, let's go down through this, line by line, and at least make some constructive suggestions? Did that happen on either side, or is this a boxing match, where we come in here, we fight, we go back to our corners and plan, and then we come back in and fight? He's gonna answer first, go ahead.
Thank you for your question. The school board, school board gave a directive in early October. I felt it was a mistake, and I asked them to reconsider.
Can you stop the clock while he's taking his turn? I asked, yes, okay, okay.
He, they wouldn't reconsider, that's their right. So, we rolled up our sleeves, because they asked us to do the heavy lifting, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
We did not sit down with each other across the table. The board has, for the past couple of years, had the desire to meet alone without administration and do the work. But all that aside, that's happened a few times. I, I asked them last year not to do that, but to have us work together, they, they felt it was beneficial to do so. And that's what prompted the 1.2 million dollar reduction below the current fiscal year on September thirtieth, 2017, when they met in the community center in the afternoon. So, the answer to your question is, no.
Okay, thank you. Somebody on the school board answer that question? If, if the chair wants to, that's fine.
From my, my perspective, we have had some discussions. I think one of our projects, we asked to have the administration there. We have had a couple of other Saturday meetings where they were not there. There was a school board meeting, and this sort of relates to Mr. Seaman, where it was asked for specifics, where certain board members thought we could find some cuts in the budget. And there really wasn't anything offered at these meetings. So, that's sort of why it's been given back to the administration to be responsible for finding the cuts.
Okay, thank you.
I gotta respond to that, because that is not even close to true. We had a meeting on the twentieth where we talked about all these things, Mr. Rapp was not there. We had another meeting with board when we were flat out told, you guys don't know what you're doing, we're not gonna do your cuts. Mr. Rapp was not there. So, he has no idea what this board has been doing when we've met together, because he has not been there. So, that's, that's a fact in itself. To get to your point, Joe, we absolutely met together to come up, so we could look at the budget from our perspective. It's 1,700 lines, and thanks to Frank last year, we've actually started going through 1,700 lines. And it paid off last year, where we found a million dollars without, we never cut the budget last year. We found a million dollars that was part of the proposal that didn't need to be in there. So, we did the same thing this year. We came up with areas that we suggested we wanted to talk about. We were never given that opportunity. To that point, Michelle even brought it up in another one of the contentious meetings, we were never allowed to do our job, because rather than having meetings to talk about, we got to meetings and we were just resold the same sales pitch to change our minds, change our minds. So, the fact of the matter is, we made our directives in September. We were not given a budget till December.
The day of.
So, that, and, and we were told that budget was prepared two hours before the meeting. So, the fact of the matter is, it is what it appears to be. There's an 800 pound elephant in the room. We gave a directive, it was ignored, we were delayed months and months. So, had all we asked for in the beginning been given to us, we didn't want to say, cut a million, we wanted to see what it looked like, and we'd go from there, which is what happened. If we'd been given that opportunity in October, trust me, this meeting would not be happening like this tonight. It wasn't us. We tried to start early, so we could find those areas that we believe, I believe in my heart and heart, there's more than a million dollars in this budget that can be cut without touching a programmer, a teacher, or student. It happens over years and years of over-budgeting or whatever. So, and so, to that point, I would like to ask Mike, because this came up in one of our last meetings, how much money has, has the school returned over the course of the last four years?
Six years.
I wanna go with four. Because it came up at a meeting. Roughly 2.2 million dollars? So, we've averaged 500,000 dollars a year being returned to the general fund, not to the taxpayers, to the general fund, each year. That money, you paid taxes on, but it didn't go anywhere except go back to the general fund. That's our point to this exercise, people. We've been turning money back every year. So, for us, for, 500,000 dollars a year has been over-budgeted. So, to say that we, we're gonna, the world's coming to an end, because we're gonna cut 300,000, is so disingenuous, it's not funny. We will probably cut 300,000 and still return 200,000 at the end of the year. So, to your point, we tried, we were flat out ignored.
Thank you to the board members that took the time to go down through the line items, line by line, and I'm gonna make a suggestion that you ask for at least quarterly, the, the budget, so you can go down through line for line and see where the money is. That would be, that would give you through the year, what's happening with the budget. I, I, I thank you for looking at the lines. That I think is your job, and I'm not sure it's been done before, but... That I think is your job, and I'm not sure it's been done before, but thank you for doing it now. And thank you for keeping an eye on our money, especially, I can't say it enough, for the people that can't afford it. Thank you.
I don't think we have any more people that want to speak. Anybody else that wants to speak? Carol. Okay. So, we're going Carol and then.
Joe, this is for you. Carolyn Toll, Ward One. I would like to see, to the public, a spreadsheet of what was proposed as for savings, line by line. I was at one of the meetings, budget meetings, where I think you, Rebecca, tried to talk about some line items, but it was shut down. So, I guess at this point, I'd like to see what kind of work was done. I'd like to see what the amounts were. That's the question that's swirling in my mind. I love Stevens High School. I graduated a long time ago.
How long ago?
Oh, never mind.
Oh, you're a terrible liar.
And I, um, David, I'll get you afterwards. Um, I had two grandchildren, very proudly graduate from this high school. And I know some of the ins and outs that they suffered going through four years of high school. Well aware, I brought up four children. I know what they are. And with today's society, I'm glad they're not growing up these days. So, there's a lot of pressures. I get it. But I'd like to know just how we're spending our money and where we can save. Thank you.
So, I, I guess I need some clarity. Chris, you just mentioned that X amount of money was returned to the general budget every year. And I always thought that at the end of a school year, if there's money left over, it becomes a fund balance. And, and I don't think it can be held over to the next year's general fund unless it's within certain, um, legal, um, situations. So, that has to be explained so that we know the difference between certain line items where you have fund balances and certain line items that you don't have fund balances.
Um, three years ago, the, uh, four years ago, the Claremont school voted to allow a carryover of 2.5% of fund balance under RSA 19820.
Okay.
What that allows is, is, is an amount to be carried over, which is about six hundred thousand dollars. That money was not carried over in thirteen. The amount returned in fund balance was 172. Two thousand fourteen, there was a 1.8 million dollar surplus, mainly driven by health insurance savings. Of that, we returned 1.2 to the taxpayers and we retained 600,000. The purpose of retaining the 600,000 then was to help with equalization of tax rates. What we did in two thousand fifteen is we returned 584, 480. And then in two thousand sixteen, we returned 326, 329. We still currently have carried over 175,000 dollars. That's the carryover fund balance from the sixteen, seventeen school year.
So, when that money's carried over to your general fund, let's say the maximum amount of 600,000, because it's a percentage of your budget, um, is it the board's vote that decides on where that money is spent?
Uh, the, the only way we can spend that money is, we can use it for, um, unanticipated expenditures, but only with the approval of the DRA and the DOE. Or we can use it to offset taxes in future years, which is the only purpose that we've been using it for.
So, what kind of, does the board at all make any votes approving how the money is spent?
Uh, as I said, the only way we've been using it is to offset taxes. And every year when I do my DOE twenty-five and DOE twenty-four, is a discussion with the board concerning how much fund balance they would like to carry over. So, yes, that's the, but that's the only thing we've used it for.
So, they have a, so the board does have a responsibility in overseeing that money?
That is correct.
Okay.
But I, I do make recommendations, obviously, you know, to try to keep a little bit of the money to offset future taxes or return it all. It depends on the number. But obviously, when you return 1.8 million dollars, no matter what you do, the next year your tax rate's going to go up two or three dollars.
So, the reason why I'm bringing this up this way is to help the public completely understand that any, any revenues that are returned to the general fund as a separate line item, savings from one budget year to another, still is, has the oversight of the school board and, and the administration plus the state agencies. And that's important for everyone to acknowledge that it's just not the administration spending money or a school board spending money. It's a collaborative with three different parties.
Yeah. And again, a large portion of that was return of, uh, uh, health insurance money?
Yep. I remember that.
Health trust gave back, it was a large sum because there was an order from the Supreme Court.
Yep.
So, they had to give back, a lot of municipalities and school districts got a lot of money back.
Mm-hmm.
We were one of them that got, that lost some. So, that came in as, uh, basically revenue.
Yep.
Unanticipated revenue.
I think it would be prudent for the board to, um, revisit the, um, um, unanticipated revenues that you might acquire when there is a fund balance at the end of the year to make sure that you're doing just, fair justice to the public. Um, I would be in favor of, uh, returning everything to the public unless you had the fund earmarked for a specific cause like building repair. And to justify the building repairs, you should do constantly a continual up, uh, upgrade to your CIP plan, which identifies the needs, plot them out so you know what the priorities are. So, every year, you're working on the real urgent priorities and you use that fund balance money, that's a maximum of 600,000 a year, to help fund that. Then you're preserving the assets of the community. Thank you.
Uh, just want to start off by saying thanks to the administration for the job you do and thanks also to the, uh, board for the civic duty. Obviously not an easy job and you have to take time out of your otherwise busy lives to do what you do and it's not always easy or fun. Uh, so I had one question as a result of discussion from hearing about the 2.2 million that was given back over four years and the 1.8 from healthcare as a one-time charge. Was that included as part of the 2.2? Or how much of that 2.2 was from healthcare, if, if any?
Um, most of that was healthcare. There was about a 1.8 million dollar return of, of monies that, that contributed to that 1.2 being given back. Like I said, there was 1.8, but we elected to carry over some to offset the impact in future years so that the tax rate wouldn't go down by 250 and up by 350 the next year.
Okay. So, of the money that's given back, it's not like it's over budgeting, that was a one-time unforeseen, you know, it's a good thing for sure. It's money that comes back, but that doesn't, to me, that doesn't speak to a systemic problem of over budgeting that's, uh, perhaps being alluded to. Um, another question or point I wanted to raise was if we both agree that the fixed costs on personnel represent roughly three quarters of this budget. So, rough numbers, 24 million on a 32 million dollar budget. Again, I'll just round up for simplicity. So, if we think that there's 1.2 million that could be found, plus the changing environment of downshifting from the state to the tune of roughly a quarter of a million, plus the fixed cost increase of the contract which, which was recently approved, so now we're talking 1.7. But if the board's directive was to not touch teachers, which is fixed at 24, so that only leaves roughly 8 million as discretionary, I guess for lack of a better term. Are you suggesting that if you don't think any teaching positions or, or personnel needed to be cut, do you think that that roughly 1.7 could be absorbed in the remaining 8 million? Because that's roughly a 25% um, cut to what's left in the budget. Is, is the math tracking or?
Yep.
Um, because that's pretty significant. And when you look at a budget that's been fairly level for the last four years, um, I think the low hanging fruit's been picked. And so, to continue to try to, you know, squeeze the orange, I guess to use that analogy, that would seem to be pretty tricky. So, if you think it can be done, I guess Mr. Seaman's comments seem to be pretty relevant. It resonated with me anyway. If you're convinced it could be done as a board and that there's areas that can be hashed out and, and squeezed and fine tuned, uh, please, for the, for the sake of the community, I would encourage you to find a way to sit down and work at, work that out because of the, you know, the boxing match thing is, it's not doing this community any favors. I mean, I think if anyone's going to watch this, hopefully there's nobody with a prospective business looking to relocate to our community that's going to tune into local access because it's not, um, well, it will be on, right? They're gonna.
It's on TV.
Right. So, it, it will be shown at some point and, um, that's something to be mindful of. But again, I appreciate the job you're doing. It is difficult. If there are savings to be had, sure, let's find it. I don't like paying taxes any more than the next person, but I also know the value of a solid school system and what that means long-term for the success of this community. Thanks.
It's Patty Arison again, and I promise I'll be quick. Uh, because we were talking about black and white concrete figures, I wanted to remind everyone about the, the, the costs that cannot be described in black and white figures. I wanted to go back to the bat for Miriam Lovell and for Debbie Laffin and, uh, the school counselor also, because what are, I think what we're trying to do is create a school system that is a community, a supportive community. Because I work in adult ed, I, I see the results and, and, uh, and that's what we want to concentrate on, whether or not we are giving students what they need to prove, to, uh, to be successful when they graduate from high school. Today's students face problems that, that I certainly didn't see when I was a student in the seventies, that my daughter didn't see when she was a student here, uh, in the early two, in, uh, the mid-two thousands. I've worked at Claremont Adult Ed. Many of those students are going to school because it is a requirement of their probation or because they did not, uh, graduate from high school because they had problems with drugs or because they had undiagnosed learning disabilities. So, that's a place where, uh, the school director has to know what she's doing. It's not something you can punt. And the people who are teaching in that environment need someone on whom they can re, rely for, um, specific kinds of information. So, we need to, we need to be very careful and we need to be sure that we are being supportive of one another and that we are being supportive of our students. That's our primary job. So, thank you. I tried to be quick.
Are you sure everyone's had a chance to speak? All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Uh, we're going to take, uh, February seventh. What is it? Is it February seventh? No.
Yes. Where's Mary?
Yeah. Deliberative session. February seventh for deliberative.
Yeah. Six thirty at.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, sorry. At.
Says here.
John Good, oh, it's here? Changed it. Okay. So, the deliberative session.
What time was it? Six. Six. Seven. Here in this, this room. We will be having, uh, everyone good to take a quick break before we take over.
Yes. Yes. Yes.